Stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's getting better every time. I've got a number of comments, but before I go into that, I need to read a script here. I've called the meeting to order, and this is a regular meeting at the Winona City Council and is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statute point 021 in response to the COVID-19 emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you're asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak so that you're easily identified. First up, we're going to be calling 5.9, which is the Cedar Brook subdivision preliminary plat. So if anybody on this hoping to hear that item, that will be pulled. And I also want to give a big thank you to everybody involved in the poetry walk kickoff last Friday. Lee Gunderson, especially I'm a single out one person. There's so many people involved, but Mary Farrell. Mary is the one who had the original inspiration for doing this and pushed it for years. And eventually it's it's become a reality. If you haven't seen the poetry, I think there's nine of them in the downtown area. And more to follow, I'm sure. So it's it's pretty. And also want to mention that coming up in a future council meeting, there'll be some information for the council. I've asked the city manager and Chad Oubel to come back to us with a with an idea how we can proceed with doing some interpretation.
I lost you there, Mark.
I lost you. No sound.
I can hear you, Pam, but I can't hear City Hall. I guess it's the same for you.
Yeah, I can't either. And they don't they don't seem to know that we can't hear them. Let's see.
Can you hear me now?
Now.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know where I lost you, so I'll just start over again. I've asked the city manager and Chad Oubel to come back to the council with the plan for how we can do some interpretation in Wyndham Park with the Princess Winona statue is what we call Princess Winona statue. That term may be, well, maybe may not be appropriate. The word princess doesn't exist in the Dakota language. And we but there's a lot that we think we can do to make that better understood. What the history of the the statue is about the artist, how it fits into the folklore of the Winona story. There's, I think, some people that can help us with that, some Native Americans. And so we're going to come back with a with an idea of how we can conceptualize that story and do a better job of interpreting what we have there. So, you know, look forward to that. And then I have a couple of retirement I'd like to read. It's for Sergeant Christopher Nelson, who retired on October 23rd. We want to recognize his services. Sergeant Chris Nelson served over 32 years in law enforcement, with 22 of those years at the city of Winona. He started as a police officer in July 1998 and was promoted to sergeant in February 2001. During his service with the city, he was involved in many areas of the police work. Is concluding school liaison officer at the Winona Public Schools, community liaison officer, field training officer, canine handler, crisis negotiator, background investigator for new police officers, supervision of the criminal investigations division, and he worked to develop policy and procedures within the department. Chris also continues to be an adjunct instructor at Winona State University, teaching graduate classes for the criminal justice program. Throughout his career, Chris received several letters of commendation from supervisors and state level bureaus, as well as heartfelt thank yous from citizens. The city appreciates the service of Chris Nelson, and we wish him a long, healthy, and happy retirement. And then I'd like to encourage everybody to be sure to vote tomorrow. I I think likely that anybody that watches city council meetings is probably going to vote, but just there's an opportunity to. But for voters who are in quarantine or sick with COVID, if you want to vote, please do not go to the polls. There is curbside voting, but that is for folks who are disabled. You will vote using what's called agent delivery. This can be anybody you know, as long as they're not running for office themselves. Here's how. Call the Winona County Auditor Treasurer's Office at 457-8830 to request the agent delivery form. This can be emailed or faxed to you. Fill out the form and have your agent deliver it to the auditor's office at 202 West 3rd Street. The county would then give your ballot to your agent who will deliver it to you. You would then fill out your ballot and have your agent bring it back to the county office. This ballot must be returned no later than 3:00 PM on election day. So if you're quarantined and sick with COVID, you can still vote. So there is a way, and I don't know if this is on our website or not. It is, I'm told. So I'll plan on that. And also want to welcome Carrie Johnson to our community. Carrie is the new executive director of the Winona County Historical Society. Carrie comes from Grand Marais, where she's been the executive director of the Cook County Historical Society for the past 12-plus years. And I'm very optimistic. I think Carrie's going to do a great job and and just want to welcome her here and hope that she stays a very long time. Last, I want to mention that the city is very grateful to our representatives, especially Jean Palowski, our state representative and our state senator Jeremy Miller, for helping secure funding for the port, as well as the Riverfront Trail, $2 million for that project. And I'd like to ask Chad to say a few words about that.
Mayor and council, thanks for the extra minute tonight. I just want to echo the mayor's comments in thanking Representative Palowski and Senator Miller for their work on the bonding bill, as mayor mentioned, with the port projects, as well as the Riverfront Trail. And also just a special thanks to Mike Chikowski for his continued advocacy for the Riverfront Trail and this project. So I just wanted to make sure that we thank those individuals. And mayor, if it's okay, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia Leno, our outdoor recreation coordinator, for some more good news.
All right.
Thanks. Thanks, Chad. Mayor and council, I am beyond excited to announce that the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission will be recommending to the Minnesota State Legislature that the city of Winona's Bluffs Traverse project should be the recipient of the legacy grant that we had applied for in July. I should note that historically, every recommendation that the commission has given to legislature has been approved. So we are more than optimistic that the city will receive the sizable grant in 2021. If you recall, in our application, Park Rec had requested funding for $560,000, while we provided a match for $140,000, which brings the total budget to $700,000. I would like to add that of that $140,000 match, the Winona Area Mountain Bikers donated $12,000. So we owe them a huge thank you for being a great partner to the city of Winona. Just as a reminder, with this application, we had applied for funding to aid us in restoring and conserving the Devil's Cave area, trail work and installation of a path in Garvin Heights, trail work at Sugarloaf Park, non-native plant management throughout the bluffs, and the creation of two trails, one multipurpose trail and the other one, a bike optimized trail in Bluffs Side Park. I do want to give a quick thank you to Tom Stoa, who is not only a commission member of the GMR PTC, but he's also a native Winonan. So no doubt, he helped advocate for our project. Although this upcoming work is all on city property, I want to thank all the adjacent landowners for their support and patience with this project as well. And of course, I would like to thank the mayor and city council for recognizing how important this Bluffs Traverse project is to the vitality of Winona. With all the planning and coordination that has already gone into this project, we're just beyond excited to get shovels in the dirt. So thank you very much.
Thank you for all your good work. And Chad, everybody in your office and everybody involved in these projects. It's it's great news. Anything else you wanted to add, Chad? Okay. We'll go to the city manager then.
Thank you, mayor and council. I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the hard work that's gone into this year's election, both the city clerk and other city staff, and certainly to our volunteers that have stepped up and the folks that have agreed to be participants in that entire process. It's it's hard for anyone outside to think of the process to understand just how complicated it can be. And the pandemic certainly has not made things easier. But Monica, you've done a great job, and and I appreciate it. And I know that no matter what happens tomorrow, it certainly isn't because of a lack of planning. So thank you very much. That's all. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. And thank you too, Monica. Good work. All right. I'm going to ask the city clerk now to have roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Moving to the required public hearings, item 2.1 is a public hearing for the Minnesota Investment Fund application for the Midwest Co-Pac LLC.
All right, it's a public hearing. I'll declare it open. And I'm going to ask Lucy McMartin from the County Development Director to open the conversation.
So thank you, mayor and members of council. Before you tonight is a resolution of support for the Minnesota Investment Fund application. This is a loan fund through the state of Minnesota that we have used in the past, and most recently for VCS Automotive. This would be for a project at Midwest Co-Pac, which is the former for our candy company here in Winona. They have an opportunity to expand, and that project will result in building rehabilitation and equipment purchases and hiring additional employees. Amy Paris is with us. She is the sole owner of Midwest Co-Pac, and she joins us on Zoom and may have some comments also on the project. It is about $600,000, and the involvement is a MIF loan, bank loans from the company, and then a Port Authority loan, and a job creation fund package from the state as well. Thank you.
Hi. Is it okay? I'm Amy Paris. Is it okay if I say a few words?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Well, thank you guys so much for welcoming me to the community. As you probably were aware, Ferrara was employed about 125 full-time employees and closed their doors in May 2016. Before that, they were manufacturing our gummy pet vitamins for a company that I own called Licks Pill Free. And, you know, I really always loved working with the town up here and coming up here. And I saw a great opportunity for a really well-trained labor force to make something unique and, you know, wanted to keep making it here. So I worked really hard to purchase the facility. We closed on it in October of 2016 with the help of Winona National Bank, as well as the SBA. It's been a great experience so far. Unfortunately, Ferrara decided to cut up two of the main pieces of machinery that we needed to make the gummies after after October. So we had to quickly go to Europe and get those two important machines. And we were able to rehire the very beginning 18 of the former employees in January of 2017. Then we've kind of been growing slowly. We had to first put together the two machines we just bought, and then we made one of them organic and really looking to not just make our pet vitamins, but also make that growing, you know, better-for-you candy segment. And so we started acquiring other customers about in 2018. It was kind of slow going, but we've been working really hard to find kind of an anchor customer on one of our two gummy lines. And very proud to report that we closed a really large contract with them three weeks ago. And so now we will need to hire 26 more people pretty quickly and add a second shift. And now keep in mind, that's just for one of the two gummy lines. The other gummy line, you might recall, there was a fire in the facility in the spring of 2016, and Ferrara never repaired that area. So one of the things that we Lucy has been helping us with is just to onboard this new customer. As you know, in manufacturing, we have to buy kind of a ton of ingredients and need a lot of working capital to onboard them. We're able to use bank financing for most of that. And then in addition, we need some help with our CapEx to repair the room on the second jumbo line. And we're looking to start making gummy vitamins there next year. And we think just with this current customer, we're going to be hiring 26 more employees, but we do believe that the number will probably be bigger than that over the next 24 months, depending on how quickly we get that jumbo line up and running. So just wanted to thank Lucy, and this town has been so welcoming and really appreciate the city's support in our application for the MIF loan. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for having me.
I have a question for you, Amy. Are these gummies, are they for human consumption or?
Yes.
They are for human. Okay.
Yep. And even when it was Ferrara and they made our, they were making our pet vitamins at that facility when they make human candy. All our pet products are all human grade, and there's no like dedicated pet gummy lines. So if you're making pet gummies, you're making them on a human candy machine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Amy? If not, is everybody else?
I would.
Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Amy, I'm I'm really happy to hear your update and your your hear your progress here in town. I've been wondering. Back in the day, one of my favorite candies around here was those Ginseng gummies. Little gummy bears made it with gin ginseng. So you could consider that in the future.
I heard about those. Yes, I think we we are looking at, right now, we don't have a, back then, you didn't need to have a special CFR 111 to make those. But now you have to have something more than just a food manufacturing. It's a dietary supplement manufacturing. And that's actually one of the reasons we're borrowing money, because we have to create a segregated room to keep things like ginseng in now. And you have to like check them in and out. So it's gotten a lot more regulation around it, and that's what we're looking to do in 2021.
Excellent. Now, you'll have a you'll have a market in Winona, but you may have one in China, too. They're mad for our ginseng.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this issue?
Councilman Thurly.
Okay.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to compliment Ms. Paris on, A, what she did to bring the business to Winona, and now to reinforce that with additional product lines. Congratulations on your entrepreneurial skills. Thank you. I will support this request, by the way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? Anybody else from the public wish to speak? One last chance. All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed.
I'm I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Hi, Pam would second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Michelle and a second from Pam. Any discussion?
Mayor George here.
Yes, George.
I as well just simply want to say thank you to Ms. Paris for your commitment to this city. And it appears that you've had challenges in your business and more coming, and you folks appear to step up to that challenge. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for employing Winonans.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll proceed to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 3.1 is the Winona Heritage Preservation Commission 2019-2020 Annual Report.
That was included in our packet. And I don't know, Luke is on the Luke is on the Zoom here if we have questions.
Available for questions, mayor.
I have a question for you, Luke. Was the application, the legacy grant application for the Old Hough Wagon Bridge, was that awarded?
Yes, mayor, that was ultimately awarded. We are currently reviewing that again with SHPO based on some past action that was taken in 2015 and looking at that bridge. But yeah.
Thank you.
Funds for that.
Mayor Eileen. Um, Luke, I think this was brought up during one of the last meetings where we we had the HPC on the agenda. But is, are are we looking at changes to the code to address demolition by neglect?
Thank you, Councilmember Moller. Yes, the Winona HPC and its budgeting memo, which is given to the council every year in May, did propose pursuing a grant in the 2021 year to address ordinance changes for demolition by neglect. At this time, I do believe that the matching funds are still included in the preliminary budget for the council, and we would pursue that application for a SHPO CLG, which is a certified local government grant.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Luke?
Hello, Mark. This is Pam. I have a follow-up to to Eileen's question. So Luke, if this grant is is received, then what does it take to really move forward on the demolition by neglect ordinance?
The grant would be used to hire consultant services to make sure that we follow appropriate public process and reach out to the public to craft a solution, an ordinance solution, demolition by neglect solution, that is tailored to the Winona community. As you are all aware, we have a number of buildings on the national register, as well as on the local register, including three historical districts. So what demolition demolition by neglect ordinances will look like from other communities might not be a perfect match for our community. And that'll be the different types of incentives that we have to work with in terms of revolving loans, for example, for people to improve their buildings, as well as what kind of factors weigh into when we can move the building. And that'll all come out through through a nice public process and working consultant. Hopefully, we'll be able to get all to get that grant awarded, and that will be matching funds that have a really good solution here.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, there's no motion needed for this. We'll move on to the next item.
Item 3.2 is a signed request from Habitat for Humanity.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the request.
Eileen seconds.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is the Whitewater Properties LLC Mitchell Walsh Variance Overrule.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I, Pam, Ayden would second that.
Yeah, a motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. Oh, Eileen, go ahead.
Sorry, I wasn't using my hands quick enough. I I just wanted to reiterate something we mentioned at our last meeting when we overruled this, that I appreciate the work that the Board of Adjustment put in, and they did the duty that they are charged with, which is to follow and recommend rulings based on the code that we have. And so just that, you know, we appreciate that this development is unique and that the the zoning and code will be updated soon. But like most of our commissions, I am I like all of our commissions. I appreciate the work they put in on this. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll proceed to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the Midwest Co-Pac LLC Job Creation Fund Resolution of Support.
I'm Michelle. Better make a motion to approve this request. Sorry, George, I'll second.
Who made that motion? George made the motion? Okay. And seconded by Michelle.
Yes.
Any discussion? We'll vote by roll call then.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.2 is to set a recess meeting to certify the results of the city general election. The recess meeting would be on Friday, November 13th at 11:00 AM.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to set that meeting.
Eileen seconds.
A motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion?
Yes, mayor, this is Pam Ayden.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, are we are we meeting in city council chambers as we did last for the primary?
Is Zoom an option?
We'll need signatures on.
Oh, we need signatures. So preference would be to all meet here in person.
Okay.
I suppose if that's a problem, we can get a signature later, but try to be here in person.
Okay.
All right. Did we vote? Okay. Lost track of that one.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Passes.
Item 5.3 is the Winona Senior Advocacy Grants Agreement for the year 2020.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the attached agreement and authorize the mayor and manager to execute the agreement with the county.
Eileen seconds.
All right, motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. I have a question. Is this amount the same as it was the year before? Have we seen any increase? No increase that I'm aware of. Chad?
Mayor and council, unfortunately, this is the same amount for the past several years. And by several, I mean several.
Okay. Do we put in a request for uncertain amount, or is this just come from the county then?
Mayor and council, we have put in at least the last three years requests from the county to increase this amount. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but of course, as you're well aware, our city budget takes the brunt of the shortfall because certainly the expenses to operate this program continue to increase. And so we've asked the county for additional support without success.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? That will vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson. Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item 5.4 is the Bud King Ice Arena Facility Use Agreement Amendment.
I'm Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to approve the lease agreements with Bueha and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the amendment.
Councilmember Scholmeyer, second.
Yeah, motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurling.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.5, the Bud King Ice Arena Locker Room Lease Agreement with Cotter Schools.
I'm Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the lease with Cotter Schools and direct the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
George seconds that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? So a question in the, in these times of COVID, do they dress in the locker rooms or do they come dressed?
Uh, Mayor and council, we do have different protocols for the different age levels, but primarily those users that are using Bud King due to COVID come dressed. And then we allow a space within the lobby area for them to put their skates on and then go directly onto the rink or skate.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like we're ready to vote. By roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurling.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.6 is the Fine Arts Commission Granting Program.
I'm Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Eileen seconds.
All right, we, we have a battle for second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion?
Uh, Councilman Thurling.
Go ahead, Al.
Thank you, I just have a question. Who's supposed to go, Mayor?
Al, you go ahead and then Eileen's next.
Thank you. I was really interested in learning in the council agenda item that there are still funds from the Heron Project Reserve. How many years has that been? Is this the same one as the Herons that were created and then artistically displayed and then sold? That was so well received and created such a seed pot, a seed, you know, bank of monies to be used for arts program? I mean, it's great that they're still available and, and you know, at the $3,800, that's, uh, that, that's doing really good duty for that one program, so I'm just, I'm just amazed by that. But I obviously will support the program as it's stated for us.
Mayor, Eileen here.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Um, I, I'm so excited to see that this is happening. I think this is something that was discussed when I was on the Fine Arts Commission a few years ago. Um, and so I'm really grateful to them for putting this together. I hope that when this becomes successful, that, that maybe we'll be able to grow it a little bit every year in, in the same way that we, um, you know, as a city, support businesses and try to attract them to the area. I think that as far as being an attractor to an area and making it livable, the arts are really crucial. So I think that if we as a city can show that we are supporting artists, individual artists and arts organizations in their pursuits, I think that's really, really crucial. So I'm so glad this is happening and thank you to the Fine Arts Commission.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurling.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.7 is the residents petition to dedicate Lingholm Drive as a city street.
I'm Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to deny that request.
I, Pam Ayden would second that.
All right, a motion to deny by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here.
George, go ahead.
Uh, is Brian in our meeting here tonight?
Brian is here.
Okay, uh, I was out there this morning and of course I knew where the road was, but I was out there, just drove up and down that a couple of times. A question for Brian. It looks like that road, does that front some Wilson Township property yet?
Uh, that is correct. The last lot on the right is Wilson Township and the dead end lot is also Wilson Township. Part of the lot is in Wilson Township.
Okay, because I know I say being out there, you know, I understand, you know, they like to bring that, you know, bring that particular road into the city. Uh, as you get to the top of Lingholm Drive up there, there is absolutely no place where a snowplow could turn around up there. And they, they do need to turn around, especially when they have the blade on. And then, of course, we had a similar, uh, project with this back on Rodeo Drive, what, a couple of years back? And, uh, one difference there, I noticed that there is a very, very large cul-de-sac where fire engine, snow plows, they can all turn around in there, plus those residents on Rodeo Drive, they paid for all of the black topping and anything else that was done to that road. Those, I think there was six or seven homes there, uh, they all paid for that. And a question back, let's say with this road that fronts Wilson Township property, would Wilson be willing to pay anything towards that?
Well, it, it's very difficult to assess them when they're not in the city. So Wilson itself wouldn't be liable for that, that'd be the whole, the property owner, but it's difficult to assess it being a style of city lot.
Okay, so like I say, you know, I, uh, I hate to vote against, you know, fourth ward folks and all that, but really this road would pretty much be impossible to, uh, make it up to city standard. So I, I would not be supporting that request tonight, so.
Any other comments?
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna vote to deny the request as well. You know, I, I really, uh, actually I know people who live up there and, you know, I, I'm sorry that they're in the situation that they're in. You know, this is a perfect example of why we need to do smart development. And, um, and mine are Ps and Qs when we're allowing, um, these developments on the fringes of the community. And it's just another reason why it, it takes some very serious looks and, and studying and analysis when those developments come through. So something like this doesn't happen again in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are we ready to vote? I guess so. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurling.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.8 is the Bluff Prairie Respiration Grant Application.
I'm Michelle Alexander, make a motion authorizing staff to submit the grant application.
I, Pam Ayden would second that.
All right, motion by Michelle. Uh, I heard Pam Ayden, so she gets the second on that. Any discussion?
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, so, I don't know, 50 years ago, you know, when I was hiking the bluffs, uh, in the summer months almost every day, that bluff top that's in, in this grant proposal was a goat prairie and it was, it was gorgeous. There wasn't, wasn't hardly a tree anywhere to be found on, on that side of the hill. And I have hiked it a number of times in the last couple of years and it's becoming a buckthorn forest with, uh, and as you get down lower, it's full of honeysuckle, um, both very invasive. I'm really excited, uh, that we're gonna be doing this and I'm looking forward to being able to participate in helping remove some of those invasives, so this is really a good project.
Thank you. You ready to vote? By roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurling.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Item 5.9.
Carries.
Sorry, item 5.9 has been withdrawn from the agenda, so I'm on to council concerns.
All right, we're gonna go on reverse order today. We'll start with, uh, Councilman Scholmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to congratulate Alicia and Chad and, and staff on a legacy grant. You know, another one of the many things, the Riverfront Grant. You know, this is, this is what we do to improve quality of life here in our community and make it a great place to move to and, and to set your roots and, um, make it a wonderful place to live for employees of all the wonderful businesses that we have in town. I also want to thank Monica and all the election judges who, and other volunteers who will be working hard tomorrow. We know that Monica does work hard with the county auditor to, to, uh, make it a little easier to get, uh, those ballots dropped off, so I just want to thank her for her work. Thank you.
All right.
I'll vote.
We'll go to Michelle.
Um, I can't remember where our next meeting falls, like what the official date is. So what I will remind people is that alternate side parking starts November 15th. Vote tomorrow.
Thanks for the reminder.
That's a good reminder.
I got a ticket last year.
See, Mark, I'm trying to save you.
What? You should have.
I said I'm trying to save you, I'm trying to save you.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, George?
Okay, you know, I keep hearing, you know, go vote, go vote, go vote. I've been voting since I was eligible or old enough to vote and I've never missed an election. So, uh, anyway, of course tomorrow is an election day as we all know. And you know, I gotta say, you know, it's really embarrassing, you know, within our city, we have these chicken shits running around town, you know, just simply destroying campaign signs. Federal campaign signs, county campaign signs, local campaign signs. I mean, come on, you know, it is embarrassing, you see this, and like I say, and sometimes I hear that these people are paid to go and do this. I mean, you know, do they need money that bad? Campaign signs and for all of, all of us that have run for office, those that are running now, it's a very expensive endeavor to get into. And campaign signs are very, very expensive. They steal them off of people's fences, uh, they go into people's yards and take them. I mean, you know, you know, enough is enough. I'm glad the election's ending. And can we please just simply leave all of the candidates seeking office? Let's leave their signs alone. And also, I just simply like to offer condolences to the Bob Trappel family on the passing of, uh, his wife and grandmother and mother. She, I know she had some, she suffered there for a while, but, uh, just wish the whole Trappel family well as they move on with their healing process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, George. Pam?
I just want to thank all the volunteers for the downtown Main Street Halloween celebration this last Saturday on Third Street. I was down there and I saw lots of kids and lots of fun costumes. It really should be an annual event, I think. Anyway, thanks to everyone that participated in that. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Pam. Eileen?
Um, just want to echo thanks to Monica for organizing our election. Everyone should have faith in how our elections are run here and, um, it'll be just fine. And, uh, also thanking our election judges, but to the people, especially locally, who are running for office, especially if it's the first time, um, just to thank them and congratulate them on, uh, putting in that work because it is, it is not easy and, um, if you win, then the work is just beginning, so enjoy your two months. Go hide and we'll see you later. That's it.
All right, thank you, Eileen. And last but not least, Councilman Thurling.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I echo the comments about the election coming up and, um, Councilman Borzakowski reminded me, I'm also a member of the Winona Area Crime Stoppers Board. And, uh, we at our last meeting created a program that, as, as you know, Crime Stoppers offers monetary rewards for information leading to, uh, the resolution of various issue, issues in Winona County. And one of our, uh, main motions last time was to offer rewards for, uh, people who are, um, taken into custody or at least, uh, responsible for these and discover who these thefts are, campaign thefts are made. If you go to the Winona Area Crime Stoppers website, you'll get all the details and, uh, we have the backing of the county's law enforcement folks. So that's a way to get some resolution, at least, uh, this year, more than any other year, has been probably a much more divisive one and we're seeing a lot of, uh, people, uh, as, as Councilman Borzakowski described their behavior, I won't repeat that, but, uh, I think it's appropriate too. Also, um, just, uh, a sad note, um, offering sympathy and really peace to the family of John Will Bernadotte. John passed away on Friday. He was a well-known entertainer in, with the Winona area and actually, uh, in the Midwest, he played with a group called Johnny and the Shy Guys. And, uh, if, you know, he's had some problems in the last few years, but once he sat down, I think as someone said in the, in the tribute on the website, uh, once he sat down at his keyboard, all of that went away and he was back playing music. And the people will know him from some radio shows and all of that, so it was, it was, uh, hopefully gives the family some peace, so sympathy again to their, their, uh, family. So thank you, Mayor.
You think you're out?
Next is the consent agenda. There are four items. Approval of the minutes from October 19th. The final adoption of an ordinance to declare Fourth Street a thru highway. And two claims, one against the city by Richard Wunsch and one by the city against Carissa Cammer.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'm Michelle, second.
All right, moved by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurling.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Carries.
Mayor, I move we adjourn to our recessed meeting.
I'm Michelle, second to the recess.
All right, we have a motion by George, seconded by Michelle to adjourn to our recessed meeting. All those in favor? Vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurling.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries. We're done for tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.